July 21st, 2025, a meeting of the Board of Education in public which is not to be considered a public meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Turner?
I am here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Ms. Kilgore?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members have had the opportunity to see the agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Board members have also had the opportunity to look at the meetings, the meetings, the minutes from the regular meeting held on June 12th and special meetings held on June 18th, June 19th, June 23rd, and June 2nd. Do I have a motion?
July.
July 2nd.
July, yeah. July 2nd. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Special orders, Mount Healthy Teachers Association. I don't see Ms. Wakeman here, so I'm assuming we don't have anything from them.
Oh, hold on. Katie's coming in. Let me just make sure.
Is there anything from the Teachers Association?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any announcements? Any public input? I don't think so.
Yeah, we are going to have a presentation in a moment. It looks like they may be just running a little bit late, so we'll delay that.
We'll, we'll move ahead. Great Oaks Board reports. Mr. Carter?
No, that's me.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think you should fire me.
No, thank you. No, thank you. Good try, though. So we have June Angelai's meeting highlights to go over because last month's board meeting was before the Great Oaks meeting, so I'll just do a couple very quick things. The June meeting was on the 11th. President and CEO Harry Snyder recognized four individuals who would be honored at the Ohio ACTE conference in July. Also, the treasurer and CFO Brian Rabe, as well as the president and CEO Harry Snyder, reviewed the strategies and goals that were presented to the board at the start of the 2024 and 25 school year and discussed the outcomes. For the July 9th meeting, the board approved the preparation of specifications and advertisement for bids for the Diamond Oaks Aviation Project as presented by the Building and Assets Committee. This will be an extension onto the backside of the Diamond Oaks building. The board approved the Education Program Design and Evaluation Committee's recommendation to add six new programs and course offerings and to divest from one program. The board also approved three program name changes. And finally, the Great Oaks Education Foundation Golf Classic was held on June 16th, 2025, at the Blue Ash Golf Course. The foundation hosted 111 golfers and 17 non-golfers, raising $56,459.59 in net proceeds to assist students in need.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready for the presentation?
With the.
Okay. Mr. Carter, would you like to go ahead and do the legislative report?
Okay. This might be one a little longer than typical because a lot of things have gone on in the last period of time since we gave a legislative report. And I want to start with federal policy and funding because some things happen with the big bill, if you will. So US Department of Education has unlocked 1.3 billion in previously frozen grants. And what's remaining frozen is approximately 5 billion, which remains on hold pending federal review. The impact to Mount Healthy, we may have to defer curriculum or support services tied to these dollars until full release, introducing cash flow strain or service gaps. Federal grant pause, under federal grant pause and court action, the OMB directed a broad pause on new federal grant orders on January 27th. This has been blocked by the courts. Impact is delayed or partial release of Title I and other federal funds, which could affect budgeting and planning cycles. And then Department of Energy workforce and structural changes. The Supreme Court decision on July 15th cleared the way for the administration to proceed with 1,400 in layoffs. And the impact there is potential delays in federal reimbursement, slower processing of applications for grants, and diminished compliance assistance.
I think you meant Department of Education.
I'm sorry.
You said Energy.
I'm sorry, Department of Education.
There, you messed up, too.
Maybe I need some more of them grant dollars to come through. Public broadcasting and educational content. The executive order targets federal funding, and there are lawsuits that are active which affect public broadcasting, and that impacts access to literacy and educational media programs for low resource districts. So if we have any reliance on PBS classroom content or teacher professional development resources, they may, those resources may increase cost or lose continuity. Federal litigation and oversight. Multiple states, including coalition lawsuits, are challenging the federal freeze and grant halts, which may speed or stall the full release of funds. Civil Rights Office layoffs at the Department of Education, I'm not sure what OCR is, may weaken enforcement of protections for students with disabilities, critical for high poverty districts that rely on IDEA compliance and special education dollars. State of Ohio action, so that's all the federal stuff. Now we're going to the state. Under Senate Bill 168, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce began a school turnaround pilot last month. This expands services for comprehensive support and improvement. The impact to, possible to Mount Healthy is if Mount Healthy qualifies, this could unlock state resources and professional support and potential state set aside funding in fiscal year 2026. The Advanced Ohio Higher Education Act, Senate Bill 1, effective June 27th, Senate Bill 1 prohibits DEI initiatives and faculty strikes at higher education institutions. The impact, while focused on universities, they may, there may be a spillover of provincial pressure to restrict similar programming in K-12, K through 12, potentially risking partnerships or grant-based DEI mentor programs, though current fiscal effects are minimal. Parents Rights Law, House Bill 8, effective July 1, mandates parental notification of LGBTQ-related instruction and permits release time for religious education. Now, we've mentioned this several times. Implementation planning may require district resources, training, policy updates, communications, systems affecting tight administrative budgets. So you'll see under item four there, I've got just a chronology of what's happened in the last 30 days of all those items. And that pretty much concludes my report.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So tonight, we are honored to have a very special presentation. Mr. Moore is going to, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see, DeShayla had stepped out. Okay, that's okay. We can wait, no problem. So Mount Healthy had the privilege of having a state championship, champion in track. And so we have a presentation tonight. Mr. Moore, I'm sure many of you know Mr. Moore, if not all of you. He is our track coach as well as our girls' basketball coach and works at the high school. So tonight, he is going to present a plaque to her honoring her. She was the girls' Division One High Jump Champion for this year. So DeShayla, thank you for joining us tonight. And Mr. Moore will give the presentation, and then the board and Mr. Moore and DeShayla will take a picture together. Just press the, hold it and it'll turn green.
Thank you. I'm a, I'm a DJ, so I should be able to do that. All right, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank you all for allowing us to come and make this wonderful presentation to this young lady, DeShayla Warlow. She's our first, Mount Healthy's first state champion since 1964. I'm sorry, 1994. So it's 31 years since we've had a state champion. She missed her graduation to go to the district meet because she had a dream. She said, I want to be state champion. And so I said, it had been my mother, but we all got together and mom agreed, and she went to the, so she won the district championship in the 100-meter dash as well as the high jump. So I wrote everything down to make sure I didn't forget anything. She's our first state champion in the high jump. She had the 10th best jump in the 50-year history of the girls' state tournament. A four-time SWAC Conference Runner of the Year. She holds three SWAC records that will always go down forever because this is the last year of the SWAC in the 100, the 200, and the high jump. Four-time All-City, All-Inquire First Team, undefeated in 2025 in the high jump and the 100-meter dash. Four-time All-State Team Champion, three-time District Champion, 2025 District Champion in the 100 and the high jump. Three-time District Champion, District Record Holder in the high jump, two-time Regional Champion, back-to-back Champion in the high jump in the region. Again, recorded the best jump in the city and the state of Ohio this year. So again, she received a scholarship to the University of Cincinnati to become a Bearcat. So that's the best part there because I had to convince her to go to school. So, so again, thank you for your applause. We're going to present, present this award, and I want DeShayla to say a few words of gratitude.
DeShayla, can you hold the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I did write a few words to thank a couple people. So, sorry. I'm truly honored to stand here and reflect on what this journey has been to me. I'm incredibly proud of myself and all of the hard work I put in to get to where I am today. Achieving this milestone wouldn't have been possible without the incredible support I've had along the way. First, I want to thank my mom. She's running a little late, but your love, sacrifice, and constant encouragement has been the foundation of everything I've accomplished. On the days I've had bad races and terrible losses, I would overthink and often want to quit my sport. You've always believed in me even when I doubted myself. Although you couldn't make it to all my track meets, you never miss an opportunity to share my achievements with others. I will forever love you for being my biggest fan. To Mr. Moore, my coach, thank you for pushing me beyond my limits, for teaching me discipline, focus, and resilience. I appreciate you for never letting me settle for less. You might be my biggest hater, but you have never missed the opportunity to improve my skill, whether it was researching videos or trying new things at practice. Your guidance has made me stronger, not just in track, but in life. I wouldn't trade you for any other coach in the world. And to my teacher who has been with me since elementary school, Ms. Bowser, thank you for inspiring me to learn, for believing in my potential, and for giving me tools to grow both academically and personally. You're my first best friend, and I will always appreciate you. And finally, to my Mount Healthy community, thank you for lifting me up, cheering me on, and reminding me that I'm never alone. This school has been nothing but supportive and helpful, whether it's on the track or in the classroom. I feel like you guys only wanted what was best for me. I really felt a part of the Al's best. Mount Healthy's support has played a big part in my success. When I won the state championship, my name was not on the uniform. My gear said Mount Healthy, loud and proud, right on the front. My gear said Mount Healthy Loud and Proud right on the front, and that really seemed right to me. These achievements are not just mine, it belongs to all of you. Thank you.
Let's get a picture with the Board of Education, Mr. Moore. DeShayla, and DeShayla, you can tell your mom that this is recorded, and so she can watch it anytime. She can hear the beautiful words that you shared.
We'll come, you guys want to squeeze together?
Maybe over here, Michael, because of that blue about, well, yeah, I think over here.
For those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now would be the appropriate time for you to leave. We've done all of that, so we move on to the report of the Treasurer, Mr. Sol.
Yep, you got to get in the middle, right in the front.
Mr. Moore, get in there.
Everybody else will squash around here.
All right, look here. One, two, three, turn, move over, that's your, that's perfect. Okay. One, two, three. One more.
For those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now would be the appropriate time for you to leave. We've done all of that, so we move on to the report of the Treasurer, Mr. Sol.
So this evening, we're going to talk about a variety of different things, but I want to begin by thanking everybody for their kind words, their thoughts, and prayers during my time when I was in the hospital and went through a lot of different things. And I appreciate your patience in that because it was a pretty scary process, but I'm glad to be on the other side of things, looking up and doing much better shape.
Hey Chuck, this is, it's supposed to be reports right now. You jumped ahead of us. The FRP is next. This is just the monthly financial reports.
We can do those right now, too?
You're going to hear a lot from Chuck tonight, by the way.
Yeah.
I promise there's something different that's on my screen. There we go. So we'll start with the financial statements. We were able to do a lot of great work to get June closed in a hurry, and I want to thank Jake for helping out and doing a lot of that work. You know, he stepped in when we really needed him, and I appreciate the effort that he put in to help us move forward. And he's done a great job with our reconciliations. And as we looked at closing out June, the additional items that we have to do in addition to just the regular close is the fiscal year end. So we go through the traditional closure steps, just like we normally do. I'm going to blow this up a little bit so it's easier to see. But then at the end, all of this information has to be uploaded into USAS, which is our state redesign software, so it can be communicated to the state. So when you look through the numbers, we see our outstanding checks. The numbers are very similar in terms of what we do each and every month. Our variance is exactly the same as it was. And so I've mentioned a couple of times in the past that we are looking into what that variation has come from, but it's been the same since all the way back in probably early 2024, or FY '24 actually. And so Sandra's actually looking to see if she can identify what that is so we can get it taken care of one final time. And the same is also true on the payroll reconciliation that we'll show in just a second. But the variance has been consistent, which is the important part for us. So we've been moving along constant. We have good numbers in terms of a process that's in place that allows us to show the results in due diligence of closing each month. And this was actually closed probably by the 4th of June. So that was really quick. Jake did a great job with that. And then we went through the remainder part of the fiscal closing. So when you close out the fiscal year, there's a lot of different reports that go into play. These are just the standard ones that we usually do. Payroll reconciliation, as we've shown before. Adjustments get made. We have the outstanding deductibles at the bottom. And again, our variance is exactly the same as it's always been, 172333. And so, once we identify where that is actually at, we'll be able to do one of two things. One, in concert with Plattenburg, we can present that as a one-time adjustment and have it removed, or we can actually go and make the adjustment depending on what fiscal year really falls into. Because that has been around, again, since FY '24. Our cash flow summary report for the end of the year, all of those particular items kind of gives you an idea of, it's kind of hard to see with all the different accounts. But when you look at our overall, including our grants, we're in really good shape. Let me go back up just to look at the general fund because that's really what we're interested in terms of forecasting. We ended up our general fund information in a situation where we had 3.26 million is our fund balance, and we had about $2.5 million worth of encumbrances. And when I get to the workbook, it'll be easier to see than what's actually on this report. But the goal is to be able to explain to you all the different variances so that we have those, you understand exactly where those variances come from. The Commission has asked that we provide clarity on any variance over $100,000. So this top line is the one I was referring to. Our fund balance is 3.62 million. Our encumbrances, which is the amount that we still have yet to pay from FY '25, which is being carried into FY '26, is 2.5 million. And that left us with an unencumbered balance of $669,000. So better than what we anticipated in a number of different areas. And we'll talk about how we actually flow through those, but the monthly close went smooth. We found some things we were able to clean up. But when you look at this particular number for the encumbrances, one of the things I want to talk about is, this number's probably a lot larger than we're used to seeing. FY '24 was like 1.19 million. Part of that is twofold. One, when we do our purchase orders a third, a third, a third, some of those purchase orders weren't put in until June. And so there's a delay and a lag associated with how those numbers come through, so we have encumbrances that are there. So the encumbrances that are actually involved in this number are a lot of our Petermans, our transportations, and our large contracts that were divided into a third, a third, a third that we're paying through. The other part is, is that you remember back in early part of the spring, we did have some serious cash flow concerns when we were getting fairly tight. And so there was delay associated with paying some of our bills as well. So our goal is to be able to update and get as current as possible, given the status of our bank accounts, so that we can work through those. And I think this is, over the next few years, is going to be an anomaly. So I think we'll be in pretty good shape moving that forward, especially with moving SCVIEW in to help us out with that. So our monthly close in terms of the financial reports, we have our reconciliation, we have our payroll adjustments, we have our cash flow summary. And then attached in that packet that you got was also all of the outstanding checks. So any questions about month-end close or?
Chuck, you also need to go over the FRP workbook here, and we'll have to make sure that this is part of the report.
I want to get through the monthly financials first. That's next. So we, we good with this so far? Right. So now, we can expand upon that by getting to the FRP workbook. So the FRP workbook is, as you know, a living, breathing, and ongoing endeavor. There's never going to be a point in time when it is done. It's a live document, it's living, and as we make changes, it will make changes. But where I want to start is our basic forecast assessments. So when we look at where we stand, you can see where we're finished up FY '25. That matches what was on that cash flow summary for unencumbered amounts because there's the encumbrances. And then you can see that that amount, the difference is the $669,083 to the good. So those dollars are then also, when we look at what we did in finishing FY '25, start the foundation for building us into FY '26. So in FY '26, we had to do a couple of other different things. So when we went into our changes and assumptions, we went and we looked at how are we going to address, what are some of the key things that are moving on to address those particular variances? So we went through, and the ones that you're seeing here, those were adjustments that were made to get the forecast for FY '25 in line with the Auditor of State's numbers that she provided. And then we went down and we are adding to our assumption changes to make sure we can address any of the variances. Now these variances that you see here are important in that we are able to then use this tool to dig deeper and understand how we can improve those, modify those, and make sure that we are getting the most improvement as we can. So for example, we see that in this particular line item, we have a positive 2.4 million in regards to our purchase services. Well, our purchase services came in well below what the Auditor of State had projected from our previous forecast. That's a good thing. But you have to kind of temper that with the idea of we had those encumbrances. So if we are down in purchase services, which we are because we've reduced costs, we've reduced costs, we've reduced costs, that number's a little bit inflated from the standpoint of we have a lot of encumbrances as well. So that is kind of a two-edged sword to look at. But what I wanted to do was take that in terms of our projections and kind of get a feel for what we need to look at for breaking out more and more detail relative to purchase services and our encumbrances. Because that's a key area for us for improvement. So the projection, let me flip back over here for a second. The projection in terms of the forecast for encumbrances was about $747,000. We came in at 2.59. So with that being said, the difference is 1.8 million that I wanted to be able to identify so that we know exactly where that number comes from. So what we did is, we went in and did detail work to be able to determine, out of this 1.8 million in terms of our overall difference, what makes that up? And so these were the large outstanding encumbrances that were part of the year end. So again, those particular items were Peterman, they were HCC. And if I can easily show that. These are the large elements that are made up of our outstanding, that's way too small. But these are all the details behind the scenes for coming up with those numbers. So everything that we have, we can back up in terms of numbers that we've drilled down to the OPU, that we've drilled down to the object code, so that if the Commission has questions about, well, why is this variance 1.8 million, we can say this is where it came from. These are all the elements that add up to that. And so we have that level of specificity that we can have those discussions. But the important part about this particular plan is that, again, it's always moving. And nothing goes into the workbook unless it's an actual number, right? So we've had to work through that in the past. So what I can't put into the workbook is all the speculative pieces of the puzzle relative to the changes from the biennial budget. Now, do we have an idea what that's going to be? Sure. But at the end of the day, I don't want to put it into the workbook because it's not real. We're not going to know that until probably the October timeframe. Might be the first settlement statement in October, or it might be the second one. So what the task that we had was to take the FRP, work through it, and make sure that we were still in a way that was in the right direction from our May forecast. Now, if you remember the May forecast, can anybody tell me how much was in the green in May?
221,000.
251. And so there's a slight improvement compared to where we are. And if you can't see that number, that number is 541,785. So it sounds good, it's green, that's the great part. Now, 500,000 on 44 million is not a whole lot. So we still have to be great stewards of where we're at, right? So the goal is to continue working down the pathway of refining and drilling down so that we have our budgets in line with our forecasts, our forecasts guiding us in a way that we understand how we can continually make improvements, and we can satisfy the Commission in that we are diligent about being compliant with the FRP direction they've had. So when we talk about fiscal policy review, we can bring that up again. But the goal is, is that they want to make sure that our expenditures are required by law, they want to know that they are essential for the best interest of our students, and they just want to make sure that we are paying attention to those expenditures. Well, folks, we've gotten rid of all the gravy. I mean, it's, it's, we are trying to make sure that we can do the best we can for our kiddos so that we can have more kids that can go off and do state champions. And, you know, this conversation's not happening at some of our other local school districts around here. They're not sweating what the biennial budget's going to do to them. They're worried about losing some of their buildup capital that they have because of their slush fund that they've developed over years because they're going to claw that money back. That's what I call a high-class problem. That's not something we have to worry about because we don't have a whole lot they can claw back. Now, have they tried? Sure. So we take a look that they put things on hold, like Mr. Carter talked about with some of the grant funds, but also some of the processes that they've put in place. So we really don't know what the final result's going to be, but I want to just say that as we continue to move this, keep in mind, please, that this is a living, breathing document. And a month from now, it might document. And a month from now, it might be different. And I can almost guarantee that when we do the November forecast, it's going to be different to where it is currently. So when we think about our expenditures, for example, all of those documented items get put into the workbook. And when we talk about detail, just as an example, the concept of changes in superintendence required four line items for each person that was in the domino chain. So Valerie had wages, she had benefits, she had a separation cost. And then we had to go back and put for Dr. Wilson, new salary, new benefits, old salary, old benefits, and the like. Now, I will say this, that was not always requested from the Treasurer's Office. So back when our other folks were here, they just had a single-line entry. But I'll be glad to provide them the four lines if that's what we want to do. This document would be a lot more, I got some detail I still have to add in, but at the end of the day, I was wanting to present this because we'd worked through it, and these numbers are real. And as we continue to make changes, I think that we are in pretty good shape. Now, with the biennial budget, there's two things that are potentially going to have an impact relative to the House. So the House version that we used for the modeling of our forecast in FY, or in May, they had certain understandings in terms of how they were using their comparison years for the fair school funding formula, and then also they included targeted supplemental assistance. Well, targeted supplemental assistance is aid from the state that's used to help schools that are losing kids to non-public schools. So the state was helping us out by giving us some dollars. That was going to be in the House bill. Well, when the Governor finally signed it, there was a lot of things that were pulled out of that. And we think we understand what that's going to look like, but at the end of the day, as I said earlier, we won't know until October. So between now and October, we'll have a lot more work to be able to do. But at the end of the day, I think that, you know, you can't say enough for the work that Dr. Hawkins has done, Dr. Wilson's done, and all of the team, for all of the effort to get to this point. I mean, they have done yeoman's work in terms of establishing priorities, holding to those priorities, and ensuring that the expenditures are in line and constantly strive when surprises happen. So you think about those surprises. Last year, the forecast looked pretty good until we lost two and a half million dollars in DPIA. So we can't always control what the state's going to do to us. But we can prepare ourselves, and the best that we can do is build up our green line, or our green number of 541,785, as high as we can so that when they decide they want to make some changes, we'll at least have a little bit more buffer to be able to deal with that. So while it's green, I would caution that it's still thin. I mean, it's only a half a million dollars on 44 million. But what we want to be able to do is continue to move that forward, which will then obviously help us with the FY27, which is 1.2 million. So there's a lot of continual effort and work, but we have to approach it one year at a time, and one step at a time as we deal with the continual changes that come through. Any questions about where we're at so far with our numbers? FY25 turned out really well in terms of where we stood, and, nice little slide to show that. These are just the variances that we have, close some of these off, easier to see. It always looks better on the screen, on your screen than it does the other one. Now we can see the actual forecast lines and the variances. So general property tax was down $139,000, $139,000 on 11 million. There's a lot of fluctuation there. Most likely, that fluctuation's associated with potential delinquencies and just the timing of the payments that come through. So if we take a look, we also had a small variance in unrestricted grant and aid of $22,000. But the 458,000 that you see in other revenues, all over the revenues, is a timing issue with Medicaid. So Medicaid always operates in the rears. And so we just received, and remember, everybody saw the email that was sent out, $817,000 and some change from FY23 final settlement. So those numbers are important for us. And that taking into effect the fact that our FY25 amounts aren't as much as they were prepared to, or we were prepared to receive, is purely a timing scenario with Medicaid. So we'll get those dollars from '25, but it may not be until at the end of '26 or potentially '27. Because if you think about it, those $23, FY23, we've already been through FY24, FY25, we didn't get those until fiscal year FY26. Now, it's barely into FY26 because they came in early week in Ju, or July, but it gives us an understanding of where those numbers actually come from. On our expenditures, you can see that we've moved along and reduced our expenditures in all key areas. There was a slight change in salaries, and that was primarily just to additional supplementals and a few other things. But here again is that number for our purchase services, and we were expecting to come in at 16,172. We came in 2.4 million dollars less than that. So again, I caution only from the standpoint that those encumbrances go hand-in-hand with what we have for purchase services. So at the end of the day, when we get down to our results, we have a ending cash balance that was projected to be 747. And I think we're going to end up, well, you saw where it actually is. And I think that's just a testament to the good work that was done. We were estimated to come in, that's where we started the year, we have a difference of 747,519. That's the difference between our ending cash balance of FY25 and where we're being able to go in terms of starting out FY26. So there's a lot of information, there's a lot of different numbers. And what I would encourage you to do is if there's any particular number that you want, or if there's something that you want me to expound on, certainly let me know. I was on the phone today at 4:30 with Dorothy as she was continuing to ask questions and drill down on the elements that she wants clarity on for the Commission. And so if there's something that you would like, just feel free to let me know, and we can certainly expand or make those adjustments. Because we're trying to fine-tune the best data to support all the efforts that have been accomplished, but also use it as a proactive tool to dig deeper in terms of areas where we might be able to make further improvements. Not cuts, but reductions in expenditures in terms of doing things smarter, not necessarily harder. Any questions about the workbook?
Chuck, thank you for all that work. I do want to note that Chuck was very diligent to make sure that he followed the resolution of the Commission. So I just want to kind of highlight that. Last time, you may remember, we were, we had some questions about the June because we were finishing up the year. And so in the resolution, it says, whereas of today, the district's May 2025 five-year forecast update projects a positive general fund balance for FY25 and FY26, and the Board of Education is working to complete the required FRP workbook to incorporate corrections to the FRP items and FY25 end-of-year actuals no later than July 27, 2025. And so Chuck and Jake and the rest of his team have been working really hard to get those actuals. You know, closing out a year is very difficult. And so the fact that they were very diligent to get that and then align it to the different forecast is very important. Another part of the resolution that was due this month that I just want to highlight, that they have met this, it says, no later than the July 2025 board and commission meetings, and each month thereafter, the board will provide documentation for each expenditure line in the forecast using the FY25 actuals. And that's what Chuck was showing you. As a starting point to clearly demonstrate and communicate that the FY26 operating budget for each expenditure line has been reduced to the statutory requirements or state minimum operating standards. So I just wanted to note that there were some resolutions from the Commission that were directly put forth to the Treasurer's Office that had to be completed by this meeting, and they've done an outstanding job of putting that together on a very short timeline to present to you tonight. And as Chuck mentioned, things change all the time with our enrollment and funding, and he will continue to monthly give you this FRP workbook. But I just wanted to highlight those two parts of the resolution to note that they had met that, in my opinion, on what was detailed.
Because it's one of those things that, it's like Occam's razor. You can always peel back one more layer of the onion, and you'll never really get to the bottom core, right? Because every level is just one thin slice, one thin slice, one thin slice. And that's really where sometimes the, working with the Commission, they get focused in on all of the details. Well, the details are extremely important for us because that's how we improve. But at the same time, we have to make sure that we can continue to run our district in a way that is best suited for our kids. So that's kind of the goal that we have, right? We have to be financially good stewards. But at the same time, my opinion is that we are educational professionals who are called to benefit our kids. I mean, I was a teacher first, I was a principal, and now I'm a treasurer. So at the end of the day, my philosophy hasn't changed. It's all about what we can do to make our learners successful. And our responsibility is to take every one of these little dollars and every one of these particular numbers, and not hoard them for ourselves, but make sure that they get the benefit of those activities, right? So when we look at all of these things in our expenditure reductions or in our changes of assumptions, these are things that are important because we're doing them for our kids. So we have transportation, we have all kinds of other services that we're providing that we're paying, we're doing what we can do. So I think it's important for the Commission and for all of us to understand that we are working collaboratively to satisfy the intent of the FRP, but also to make sure that we have, at least from my perspective, a vision in that we got to take care of our kids. Because I said earlier, other districts don't have this problem. This is an intercity school challenge, and it's a high-poverty school challenge. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, there's a fast-burning fire coming that wants to destroy public education. I'm a student of public education. I may not be the brightest bulb in the chandelier, but I'll tell you, it helped me to become the person that I am. Think about all those experiences that we had. Think about through the years how Mount Healthy has been able to change and evolve. And it's important that our kids that are coming up have that same experience and opportunity. And so we'll do the best we can to make sure that that comes about. All right. Any other questions about the FRP? All right, I don't have the rest of my agenda in front of me. What's next?
Well, they have to vote. They're going to vote. And on the monthly reports, I would just note that it was the cash summary, the payroll bank account, the general bank account, the outstanding checks, and the FRP workbook that was presented.
And it's okay for us to vote on that, not as four separate items, right?
Since they're all monthly reports, you can, and every month thereafter, as we noted, the FRP workbook will be under these monthly reports. It's just, as Chuck said, it just is a constantly changing and evolving.
It's just, we had the one issue of the vote being not what the Commission thought it was.
Well, I mean, you could, you could do the FRP workbook separate if you want to do these monthly reports and then amend it to the monitoring workbook. You could do that. Because the Financial Recovery Plan that's listed is different than the FRP monitoring workbook. So the Financial Recovery Plan is what we initially had last year with the 16 items, and we're going to do a presentation on the ones that are still outstanding. The FRP monitoring workbook is just an ongoing monthly thing. So it might be a good idea, Julie, as you mentioned, to approve the ones here and then do a separate vote for the workbook, however you feel is best.
I think because the Commission had an issue with that the one time.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
That they weren't fully convinced that we had approved the workbook. So that would be, I guess, an amendment to the agenda. So...
Did you want to vote on the first reports and then do the...
Sure, let's vote on the first reports. So that would be the monthly financial reports. That's item B on the agenda, under the Treasurer's Reports. Do I have a motion to accept those?
Still moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Okay. And then we would need to add to the agenda, what would be the best wording for that, do you think? So we would put that in as... So we want to put that in as item C, and then bump everything else forward? Okay. So, Presentation and approval of the FRP workbook. Okay. And so this is a vote to change the agenda to include that. Do I have a motion to make that change? Okay, that's Ms. Anderson, Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. All right. So now, we're moving on to what will be item E, correct?
Yes.
The presentation and approval of the Financial Recovery Plan. And there's a few thousand pages of that here.
So, just as a note, we were given back June, July last year, the FRP plan, where we have worked very hard to make the cuts necessary to get us to Solvency. And when that was reviewed initially, there were 15 actionable items that had to be presented and approved by the board and the Commission in order for the entire plan to be approved. We had an extension... We had an extension, originally it was going to be around August. We had an extension in last October is when there was that big presentation. And some were approved, a few were approved, others were not. And throughout this last year, at different times, different items on that have been approved. Some of the items that we're going to review tonight, in essence, have had approval because, for instance, I'm going to be talking about facilities usage. We've already done those PowerPoints, but we wanted to kind of wrap it all together because it had happened at so many different places and just summarize it so that the Commission could then look at the information and say, yes, definitely checked off. So there are several things tonight that we will be presenting. And this should meet the final requirements of the FRP document, which is different than the workbook which Chuck just shared, to get that final FRP approved. So the things that will be happening tonight, Chuck had already started talking about, he will be going over the budget information for what the Commission wanted. He will be reviewing the financial policies. Chuck and Jake will be doing that. I will be going over facilities usage. Dr. Wilson will be going over transportation. And then, in review of the FRP, number 16 was added at a later time, which was the special education audit. Dr. Wilson will be sharing information related to that special education audit, which happened a few months ago. And it's our hope that that will satisfy the requirements. We did send this information ahead of time to Dorothy, and we just want to thank Dorothy for her input to show us areas that she thought we could make it a little stronger. And we made those changes. So we are hopeful that with the collaborative work with Dorothy, that these will be approved by the Commission. Do you want to start, Chuck? So Chuck, he's getting ready with his PowerPoint. And we'll start with the budget. Chuck and Jake have put a lot of work into this. And so, we appreciate everything that they've done to get this where it is tonight.
I always think it looks blurry. Yeah.
So one of the things that I wanted to be able to talk about is set the process and understanding of budgeting and forecasting, so we have some common language. People use budgeting and forecasting interchangeably and they're conceptually very different. When we think about budgeting, we're looking at getting physical direction from the leadership in terms of, out of our appropriations are pockets of money that have been approved. And back in June, the Board approved temporary appropriations that got us started into FY26. Based on those temporary appropriations, those are bundles of money that then get disseminated through the respective budgets. Well, the goal is to then tie those on the forecasting side. So budgeting and forecasting, while they are similar in terms of use, they are just connected in tying those things together. And the key is that between forecasting and budgeting, there's that big word that we can take a look at variance. So we want to be able to evaluate our budgets and look at it monthly and regularly as it applies to the forecast, because the forecast that we establish and we approve is our marching order. That's what we've agreed to do. This is what we are going to follow. And if there's a hiccup somewhere along the way, then we can make the necessary adjustments. But from a budgeting and forecasting standpoint, our goal is to get our budgets based off of our appropriations and move in a way that's consistent with student-based focus. So when we think about budgets, it's all about meeting the goal. In our case, those goals are the strategic initiatives of the district. What are we doing to make sure that we can satisfy the mission that propels us to move forward? So my goal is to give them the dollars so that they can be successful to be able to make that happen. And when we think about it, it's, in our case, going to be set for a specific period, but it has to be built on prior trends as well. So when we pull together the budgetary numbers, we just don't think about it and say, well, you know, that number kind of looks high. We maybe wanted to reduce that one or increase this. So when we look at budget scenarios, we go back and look at three prior year's history. We look at running averages, and we can actually then assess any fluctuations that may have occurred, the pinpoint anomalies that would have been developed over that time period. So we utilize a tool called Forecast Five by our data handler. They house all of our data that goes back for a long time. So when I look at a run trend with them, that can be 10 years' worth of information. So I feel comfortable with our projections based off of those trends because we're not just looking at one prior year, right? So that's important for us to keep in mind as well when we're thinking about our budget. So as we think about our process, our goal is to be able to tie down to the specific forecasted line items. So just like what you saw on the five-year forecast, what you saw in the workbook, for each of those respective line items, those are our large buckets that we will have. But then we drill those all the way through so that we actually go down to the building level, to the account code within that building level, and we can then track it all the way through the system. Those dollars, once they are in, our goal is to make sure that we monitor those, we keep our variances under control, so that we are ultimately able to provide a system that puts the student in the center of the process so that we can be good stewards of the resources that we actually have. So when we look at the process, it's that ongoing cycle. I'm moving my finger. So when we think about it, the goal is to be able to constantly move, evaluate, update, move, they are moving documents and they're not just going to be steadfast. So there are some folks that when they do the five-year forecast, they get it all developed, all nice and neat, they put it on the shelf, and they never go back and look at that five-year forecast again. Well, they can do that because they have the luxury of having a nice surplus. In our case, our forecast is important because that's, again, our marching order so that we can stay true to the requirements from the Commission, from the state, and to satisfy the requirements of being in a physical emergency. So, again, it's an ongoing endeavor. And the important thing, as I jumped ahead, but it's all about, it's a journey and not a destination. We'll never get to an end point where that workbook's going to be done or that a budget is truly going to be done. Will it be uploaded into the system? Sure. But it's a living, breathing document. So when we think about it, if we have, say, $50 million in the general fund, but we need to make adjustments because curriculum is shifted from one building to the other, that's where those budgets are going to get changed and adjusted. Reality, though, is, is we can't change those budgets if they would supersede the allocations or the appropriations. So that, again, is that check and balance to make sure we go through the process and stay true to the marching orders we've been given. So the budgetary process, we've already got started on, there's a lot of information in this, but the key is, is the temporary appropriations, the Board of Education, as well as the State Commission, has already approved. Those items have been, based off of the temporary appropriations, been uploaded into state redesign. We have had meetings with the stakeholders to talk about, at the budget level, at the building level, what that might look like for them. And we are starting again tomorrow, have had multiple conversations with county auditors. We will be developing and putting together our final appropriations so that those can be approved at the August Board meeting. And that will give us the true number that we can use for setting all of our budgets. But now, the budgets are at a temporary level. And Jake, there roughly half?
Most, outside of grants.
Yeah. Grants are kind of the other part of this puzzle that we're working through. We want to make sure that the correlation between the CCIP and our budget rings true. When I go back and I look at some of the information from last year, I can see that the CCIP was updated, but I can't see back where they made the changes in redesign. So those have to be consistent and updated on a constant basis. So if Mr. Kinzer goes in and he makes a change in Title I and the CCIP, and makes an adjustment to his allocation budget, we have to be in good communication so I can go in and make those adjustments within our budgets and USAS as well. So all of these elements tie together in a way that we're putting some good tools in place to help us. Now, in reality, I would like to say that this should be easy and it should be old hat because we've done it for years. I got the same resounding comment from everybody, that was the first time they had a budget conversation. It won't be the last time they have a budget conversation. So we will continue to have those dialogues and we will continue to move forward. So the nice thing is, is that with SCVIEW, SCVIEW was a tool that North Coast brought in and wanted to implement. So they brought in the tool, but didn't do anything about implementing, so we are. We're putting in SCVIEW, which if you think about it, is an augmented system to help with state redesign. It doesn't replace redesign, but it is a tool that helps enhance what redesign has. The best way to think about it is, this will give us the control pieces that are lacking in redesign. So requisition approvals, PO approvals, payable approvals, they are all automated online. And there is a timestamp history that you can see exactly where something was done, who did it, when they did it. All of our then and now's get time stamped and get approved, and all of those flow through in SCVIEW. So it's a great control tool to help us with compliance. So if you think about what we would be doing with SCVIEW, an easy way to think about is the workflow. So if we take business operations, for example, Jake Kilgore would put in that requisition. That requisition would then go to her boss for approval. So that would go to Shayna for approval. That then goes to Superintendent for approval. Then it comes to the Treasurer for approval, and it gets converted. You say, well, wow, that's a lot. It can all be done in a click, just looking like an email. But, it's really, it shows you everything about that. So when you pull up that PO and you have a question about the requisition, all the information is right there in front of you because it's all scanned in to begin with. So it's a great tool that'll help us with that compliance standpoint. Michael says, I need the microphone. So SCVIEW is one of those tools that will help us in better managing and being good stewards from an efficiency standpoint, because it also keeps track of things like our contracts, puts them all in one fell swoop. And it ties different pieces of the financial arena into a packet called a financial packet. So in that financial packet in SCVIEW, you'll actually have the requisition, you'll have the invoice, you'll have the contract, the purchase order. Everything that you were looking for is in one place. So when it comes time for the auditor to have a question, the auditors will actually get a read-only access to SCVIEW. They can actually go and see, oh, check number so-and-so, here's all the detail behind it. So it makes things easier and more efficient. As I said, SCVIEW, which is actually called Strategic Solutions, that's the company that owns it, that ties together with our redesign, gives us the financial controls and compliance. Through this work order process, the important part for us is going to be making sure we provide new training for all of those that are going to be using the system, and making sure that we can improve some habits that we didn't bring. So for example, it's very common for districts at the beginning of fiscal year to just clone every purchase order they did prior year. It's efficient from a time management standpoint. Well, from a financial standpoint, it's not the best way to do it. If we don't need it, don't enter the requisition because it increases those encumbrances. So one of the things I was learning is that when we were going through the encumbrance process as we closed out the fiscal year, some of the encumbrances we had to go back and clean were from July of last year that had never had any action on that purchase order. But it was there in case we needed it. Well, it's good, but at the end of the day, that increases our encumbrances and it gives us a negative picture in terms of our finances. So where did we actually get to with our budgets? All of our budgets, as we indicated, are tied back to our cash flow analysis that allows us to see exactly where we are and we want to our ending cash balance, which is the same number that you saw earlier, $3.261 million. And that's what helps us in terms of getting started on our journey, that in conjunction with our appropriations that were approved back in June. It's going to be a continued area of focus for us to be able to facilitate methodology because if you look, 2021, it goes, it's going down, it's going down. We just want to, see that maybe just gone a little bit? But we've steadied the decline and I think we're going to be, I think we're going to be okay. So the goal is, when we're thinking through this process with all of our budgeting, Jake and I had meetings with the building principals. We have some people who are obviously out on vacation, weren't able to get to those, but we will continue to do that. The next step is, once we have our final appropriations done, which we'll be submitting those to the county within a week, we will sit with the executive team and they can help prioritize where they want those dollars to be drilled down to. So everything's just kind of a flow chart, if you will. So the big bucket up at the top, the general fund, has their appropriations in this level. And then we can break it out for teaching and learning, professional services, we can put it down in the capital that might need to be purchased. Those are the decisions that come from the superintendent and those are in strategic leadership position for the district. Our goal from the Treasurer's side is, here's the bucket of money, this is what we can put in it, you just tell us where you want it. And it all boils back to having our kids be as successful as they can, give them the dollars that we have with them. And at the building level, it'll give them an idea of, well, here's what it's really adding up to in terms of a budget by student count, right? So there's a lot of things that happen behind that scene. But our chart of accounts, for example, has over 750 current active chart of accounts. Those pieces of pie all funnel back up, though, to the same appropriations level. If they don't, then there's something that has to be corrected. But we're all driven by where we've ended up, because that'll set the tone for where we're going to go. We have the appropriations. Those appropriations then allow us to move into the details of the budget. With the budget, we just have to make sure that the budget matches the forecast so that we can be compliant with the expectation of what we're going to end up the year with in terms of our projected values. Again, one of the things that I talked about earlier and I wanted to point it out again is that in that FRP workbook we went through, I mentioned it and I wanted to say it one more time, we don't know what's going to happen with the biennial budget ultimately flowing through. I think we may have an idea, but until it's a real number, we're not going to put it into the workbook. So when we think about that, the goal is to wait and see what happens in October because our fall forecast doesn't have to be submitted until November. So we'll know prior to the submission of the fall forecast, how it's all going to fall prove, or how it's all going to triple prove. So, the goal with our budgeting process is to work hand-in-hand with the account holders and to push to the lowest feasible level the accountability for the money that they use. Because who knows more than the person who made the order as to what they want? They'll be the ones that know, can I close out this purchase order so that we have better management of our encumbrances? Those are the ones that are hand in glove with what is going on within their buildings. And so we're giving them the tools to know exactly where it is and how that stacks up. So with that, they will get automated reports to go to them and say, okay, here's your budget. You can get a flow for what that budget consistently moves as, as the budget goes down, you'll know, hey, I'm getting a little low. So the beautiful thing also is, is that it's another check and balance. You can't put in a requisition if you have a negative balance. That's another nice check from SCVIEW. So, a lot of good things going on there, but when we think about the budget process, it's exactly that, a process, there's a lot of work that's been going on behind the scenes about that. We have ran hundreds and hundreds of spreadsheets and calculations and it'll be a consistent or continuing process. And once we have our final appropriations, we can then balance that through and we can go from there. So just one way of looking at how we traditionally flowed and what we kind of think is going to happen. So just one way of looking at how we traditionally flowed and what we kind of think is going to happen. This is what has been the projection and outcome for revenue and forecast sources over the years to see what's going on with the state. And when they look at all the data and they look at the things that are going on there, one of the goals is that maybe I might see a little bit of increase in that state funding. We keep getting promises, but they're not making promises, notice until FY '29. That's a couple of biennial budgets away. So for now, we know where we are and we know what we're trying to get to and we can continue to work in that endeavor. But the budgetary process is moving smooth. We have things that are already in place where all of the accounts are indicated. And we will have the stuff committed to the county auditor for final appropriations approval by the August 4th. And that's exactly the same timeline that was used last year for final appropriations. They were approved last year in the August budget, or at the yard, uh, August 4th. Taxatory requirements, they don't have to be done by up until October 1st. Any questions about budgets? So you do the fiscal policies one here?
Sure.
So when I was at home recovering, I had actually started this process back in the spring of working with Norm Burkhardt at Neola to go through our fiscal policies and to make sure they were updated and true to the intent and requirements of the commission. And so in that, we wanted to go through and verify, and you have in your packet a one-page summary that shows all of the fiscal policies that are in there. And I captured them up here just so that you can see. But the main purchasing budget, that is our policy, is policy 6320. And you've already approved and got that one squared away with the commission. So back in May or April, you actually had the first reading. In May, it was read for the second time and it's been approved by the board and the commission. And that is the one that identifies for us that we have, any purchase order greater than $5,000 has to be board and commission approved. That you have three quotes for anything over $5,000. That is what captures all of the detail in regards to.
That probably sounds a lot better now, huh? So that makes a lot of detail for where we actually have to go. When I had Norm walk through some of these, I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to get some policies that had been around for quite a while, reviewed, updated. And Norm and I spent a lot of time talking about what was in the FRP. I sent him an entire copy of the FRP, including all the legal documentation from the commission and the auditor of state. So they had a good understanding of what we were trying to accomplish. One of the policies that is being read for review is a policy that hadn't been updated since 1996. So we just took that as a good time to go in, look at it, make any modifications or changes that were necessary. The language associated in terms of fiscal emergency, there wasn't really a whole lot that needed to be there. But while we were reviewing, was a good chance to go in and take a look at it so we could get it updated. I think we have done a good job with credit cards. We've already been through those discussions. We've already talked about the local purchasing policy. And when we think about it, our goal is to be able to efficiently use the tools that the commission has given us. But I think we've incorporated those into our respective fiscal policies. There may be some additional changes that come to our policies based off of what the state may want to do. But at the end of the day, after Norm and I spent multiple meetings together, I feel comfortable that our policies are tight, they're near where they need to be. The biggest one was already approved, as I mentioned, policy 6320, which is about the purchasing standards that are established in the FRP for fiscal emergency. Now, they may came, come back and say, well, I want fiscal emergency in every one of these. And Norm and I talked about that. If that's the case, do they want just an umbrella policy that says, in the case of fiscal emergency, you follow X, Y, and Z? Because that's really, we've already taken that verbiage and built it into our policies. But if they want it to be an umbrella policy, that's something we could do as well. But we've met that obligation of doing what they wanted us to do and I think we're good with that. Questions about policies? Awesome.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. The next one we're going to go over is facilities usage. And you have a packet that says facilities usage, review and reconfiguration plan.
Do we need to, we need to vote on the recovery plan?
There's, there's, this, we're not finished with it yet.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, there's like five parts of it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good. So we're on number three now. We've done budget review, fiscal policies, and now we're on facilities usage. So I started off and just put a summary because this has been an ongoing process. So I just wanted to highlight kind of our journey. As Dorothy said, put a bow on it to show kind of the whole process. So back in October 2024, I did a presentation about where we were with our buildings. And that PowerPoint is actually at the back of the packet. This is part of the resolution that was given to us is that in October, a reconfiguration option would be presented to the Board of Education. If you just look briefly at this, we looked at our enrollment as of October the 2nd and went and just analyzed. So for instance, how many, is everybody with me?
No.
Okay, sorry. There's a separate, yeah. There's a separate stapled group that.
Okay, so facilities usage review and reconfiguration plan. Thank you.
Okay. So in the PowerPoint, you can, you can see that this was information actually as of the beginning of October. Because they gave us some time for it to stabilize and then we analyzed it. And so we looked at where we were, we looked at our buildings, and then we looked at different configurations. So in the options, we had some different things like, well, what if we moved the junior high to south? What would our numbers be? And we looked at that. We looked at putting, for instance, another option was that we looked at putting south five through eight and north one through four. Another option was south six through eight and then doing at north pre-K and then two through five and the ELC K through one. So we did a lot of different models to see where we would be and just showing how that would impact capacity. After we completed that report, the commission initially, just as background for a reminder, we had tried to put forth some reconfiguration options back in May of 2024. The commission did not approve that because they felt they were rushed. They didn't feel like it had a full impact as far as our financial impact analysis. And the May 2024 performance audit wanted us to look at some building closings. So back in May, that's why initially it was not approved. After that disapproval, that's when they said by October, after the enrollment stabilizes, after we have reviewed what they call overhead, we needed to do the report by October 2024 for a possible mid-year implementation. So the PowerPoint that I just made reference to at the back was actually what was presented in October. And at that time, I recommended that we do not try to do something mid-year that we hold. And if we were going to do a reconfiguration, do it for this school year. During this time, we started exploring the option, Dr. Wilson specifically exploring the option of renting out our early learning center. And when we started looking at that option, if we rented out the early learning center, then we had decided we would not then reconfigure our buildings. So that was explored, people came and visited. You approved the lease on the early learning center. That's why I'm referencing facility has been kind of an ongoing thing. So you did approve the lease of the early learning center for five years at $300,000 a year with another five-year extension potential if both parties agreed. Chuck and his team pulled a variety of numbers to determine that we spend about $171,000 a year on costs like utilities and cleaning and things like that. So the overall savings to the district was $471,000 a year just in core costs to rent out the early learning center. So that was presented, it was approved in the spring. So the actions that we have taken in response to the directions from the commission, first, we did the presentation as mandated in October 2024. We analyzed the current projected enrollment by grade and building. We compared the building capacities versus the actual head counts. We, we actually identified underutilized space and talked about what we could do there. We collaborated with the treasurer's office to evaluate the operating cost and potential savings. And that's when we determined that the savings could happen by renting out the early learning center. The early learning center was moved to North Elementary. And since North Elementary was just a little over 50% as far as capacity, they were able to incorporate the preschool and the kindergarten, which did allow the early learning center to remain intact as a school. And the culture that was part of the early learning center could then be relocated to North, or to North Elementary. So the implemented reconfiguration strategy was different than the PowerPoint because originally we were talking about changing grade levels. Since right now we have half grade levels in our different schools. So preschool and kindergarten was reassigned to North Elementary. The LC was leased to a third party. I've already mentioned 300,000 that we received in the lease agreement, 171 in utility. There, there are some additional savings, for instance, for lawn care, send toss, a few things that were not in that 171,000. I mentioned we signed the five years with a five-year potential extension for them. So in regards to compliance with the commission's recommendations, I have a little chart here of what was the requirement and what was the district response. So a requirement was stabilized enrollment. We waited and did that. The fall 2024 enrollment was reviewed and incorporated into the plan. And we continue to look at our enrollment monthly. You know, we are a transient district, so monthly our enrollment may vary by even 100 students. But we continue to look at that. We continue to look at the class sizes, try to balance that out. And we did have some mid-year reductions based on the continuing examination of the enrollment. Another requirement was to analyze facility-related overhead. We reviewed utility service contracts and operational costs to get that amount. Evaluate potential savings from closure. We identified that the largest savings would be from leasing the early learning center. Develop recommended actions and timelines. The reconfiguration presentation occurred in October 2024. The ELC lease agreement was signed in the spring of 2025. The district moved the physical items from the different parts of our building. You guys approved that contract to move from the, everything from the ELC was moved to north as well as teachers being, you know, moving different classes in order to accomplish that. And that did happen in June and July of 2025. We had to submit the report by October 2024. The presentation was given in October 2024. The board reviewed it as a formal submission for inclusion into the mid-year reduction plan. And we determined to wait until summer of 2025 to make any changes. So those were the things that were mandated and the district's response. What are our next steps? We are continuing to monitor our facilities and any cost savings. You know, we have had some people actually tour the first floor of district office. And we continue to be open to that possibility of renting that space, even renting all of district office and potentially moving over to South Elementary if we found someone that was interested in that. So we are open to doing whatever we need to, to move towards solvency. We are looking at other consolidations as enrollment trends evolve. You know, this year we did make the big move of the ELC moving, but we'll continue to look at our usage in our buildings. And if there is a need to make some adjustments, then the district will analyze those numbers and the cost for that. We are maintaining transparency with stakeholders and the commission through regular reporting. And as I mentioned, look for third-party entities to rent space at the district office. And, you know, we have had a few tours, but we haven't had anyone who has said they definitely would like to do that. So that's just kind of a summary of the year related to facilities usage. Does anybody have any questions with that? And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wilson and she is going to go over the transportation and the special education audit. Do you, do you need this microphone? Okay. Make sure it's a green light.
Test. Okay. So we will start with the transportation analysis and recommendations. And it is one of the items that you should have in front of you. It says FRP transportation analysis and recommendations at the top. And again, you have already approved the amendment to our Peterman contract and approved the change to state minimums. This is just finishing out what is required for the financial recovery plan so that we can make sure that we've met all of the requirements that the commission put forth in that plan. So the first part of the FRP requirement was to obtain an outside review of transportation services to determine how efficiency may be increased to lower transportation expenditures. So we partnered with Pete Japixi. He is a transportation consultant from Innis Britain, which is our law firm. So they have their own transportation consultant who has actually worked at the Department of Education as the director of transportation. So very, very knowledgeable man, over 40 years of experience in school transportation services. So I worked with him to analyze all of our current transportation and then determine how we could, whether we could go to state minimums, what that would look like, how many routes would be needed, and then to capture truly what our net savings would be if we did go to state minimums. So you'll see some exhibits that we'll talk about in just a moment that we got as a result of his analysis. FRP requirement number two was that transportation cost would be separated between resident students, open enrolled students, and then the cost of providing required transportation for each school and the district boundaries. So while the report, first of all, the Peterman contract is not really set up that way. The Peterman contract is for a The Peterman contract is for a total number of buses in the fleet that we're operating and not necessarily how much it costs us to transport students to each different school. So we do not necessarily have separate costs for resident students, open enrollment students, and then the cost to going to each different school. But Exhibit B, which is on page two, does show the number of students, the number of routes, the mileage. And it also demonstrates that we did consider whether or not we would continue sending transporting students to the different parochials. So with cutting out nine through 12 transportation, that does eliminate one parochial school that we were transporting to, which was McCauley. And then Pete did make a recommendation to combine two of our schools, OLG, Our Lady of Grace, and St. John. So we did have two separate routes going to those buildings. They are close enough together that we can combine them. And they have few enough students that we can combine them so that we can use a single bus and reduce that amount and still be within the required timeline that the state allows. We do not have open enrollment students who are utilizing transportation at this time. So that was, we did not need to look at that. And then the report was to consider the cost of driver training programs, but those are included in the cost of the contract with Peterman. So that was not a separate reduction. That was just included in the overall reduction since there will be fewer drivers. FRP requirement number three, it says the study should include quantifying the savings achieved if the district only provided state minimum busing. So that's where we needed to consider routing, timing of routes, bell times of the individual schools, which did end up needing to change to get us to state minimums, current driver training programs. So that's where you can look at that Exhibit B and see what Pete suggested based on all of our data is that three-tiered routing layout showing the buildings, the start and end times, the number of riders, the miles, and then the number of buses needed overall. It is amazing to me how transportation professionals' brains work because my brain does not work that way. But they can very quickly say, we need this many routes and this many tiers and this many kids. And they somehow visualize that in their brain, and they're very good at it. So we reviewed this and determined that tier one would be at 710. So that's our, the time that the junior high was already starting. Tier two is 805, which previously had been the time that the ELC was starting. And tier three would be 845. So South is that tier two. So that was really the time that had to shift, was that South time because that building has the fewest number of riders. As you can see, it's only going to require one regular education bus because so many students will be within that two-mile walk zone. So Pete's recommendations appear below Exhibit B, which we already talked about. We did talk about the option of declaring one of our parochials impractical. However, the way the state has set up declarations of impracticality, it is very difficult to actually make that happen. They have changed the law to where any staff member from the parochial school can act on behalf of the parents to file an appeal when there is a declaration of impracticality from the public district. So most likely, some staff member from the parochial would appeal if we did declare a school impractical. And then during the appeal process, which according to Pete has been taking sometimes over a year, we would be responsible for transporting the students anyway. So we decided that that probably was not the best option to look at at this time. So we did, then if you look at Exhibit C, and this is where Pete's expertise really came in because he is the person, when he was at the state, he actually created the funding formula for how schools receive their funding for their transportation, for their student riders. He put all of the numbers into this magic spreadsheet and came up with the amount that we were currently receiving for our transportation funding and then the amount that we would receive for transportation funding based on a reduction to state minimums. So that is shown there in Exhibit C. Then Exhibit D shows the net cost comparison between the current service and the reduced service, which I think you have seen this document before. But ultimately, even with the reduction in ridership and the reduction of the state transportation funding, we will have a savings of approximately $904,724. So Pete, his kind of final advice was if the goal of the district is to reduce net operating costs for transportation, a reduction to state minimum transportation would accomplish that goal. So as you know, we are under contract with Peterman to provide transportation services through 2027. We had that special caveat in the, in the contract that said if we drop below 21 buses, we get to renegotiate the contract. So I worked with them to renegotiate the contract. And that amended contract appears there as Exhibit E, which now has been fully executed and signed off on by Peterman and Mount Healthy. And then lastly, payment in lieu of transportation. So because we are eliminating high school busing, we will, I already said, we don't have to transport high school students to parochial schools, but we also will not have to provide payment in lieu of to high school students who are attending parochial schools that we did not provide transportation to. So there is going to be some savings there based on the numbers that we had last year, which was about 20 high school students that we were paying for payment in lieu of. We will save around $11,672. So then you did vote on May 28th to move forward with the state minimum transportation for the 25, 26 school year. And then that gives you on the last page there a total of the savings in transportation, $916,396. The exhibits are just, the exhibit behind there is just Pete's report to me that he sent when he finished his analysis, as well as there were three attachments that he sent, which actually were captured as exhibits in my report that I just went over. So they're just there again if you wanted to see what he had actually sent in the email. Does anyone have any questions about the transportation report? Okay, fantastic. We will move into the special education report. And this will be the first time that you're hearing some of this information because this report was just completed. So this is the packet that says special education audit report at the top. And if you recall, this was not part of the original financial recovery plan, but it was added as a resolution, as item number 16, and a resolution for us to do. So the first part of the requirement was to obtain an outside entity to audit or evaluate the district's administration of special education services to identify strengths, opportunities for improvement, and potential cost savings. So back in December, we did present the different vendors who did this type of work. And we chose Schoolworks as our vendor because they did come in at the lowest cost. And then we did find some federal IDEA-B carryover funds right around that same time that we were able to utilize to pay the fee for this audit and this report. So first is just a timeline for the comprehensive review process. So we have an amazing student services team, and we spent a lot of time meeting with Schoolworks to just help them get to know what exactly it was that we needed and what the commission was looking for, and then work with them to develop a protocol and finalize it, create focus groups so that they could do their virtual visit over the course of two days, which was April 15th and 16th, and then read through drafts of reports, provide feedback, all the way up until we got the final report at the end of June. So based on the protocol that we worked on with them, we looked at four different domains. Domain one was general education interventions. And sometimes that can be a little confusing for folks, but all special education really starts with general education. And so that is really the foundation, is looking at our tier one instruction and our general education that we're providing so that we can make sure that we're providing everything that our students need and not just identifying them for special education because maybe we don't have strong enough general education instruction. So that was where we started. Domain two was child find. Domain three was free and appropriate education. And then domain four was fiscal responsibility program, efficiency, and legal compliance. So the actual Schoolworks review is attached in the back of this document. I, over the next couple of pages, summed up how the report meets the requirements of the FRP. So I just tried to give you the big highlights here so that you don't have to read through the complete report unless you just really want to. So we were asked to find some, a report that would identify strengths. The strengths that the Schoolworks team identified after going through that virtual process and looking at all of our evidence documents that we provided were that we have a very well-structured, multi-tiered system of supports process in grades K through six, that we have high compliance with IDEA-B and maintenance of effort, which we have talked about maintenance of effort in here before, and then strong caregiver partnerships and positive stakeholder feedback. So they did do a focus group of people from the community, people outside of Mount Healthy who we work with. And, and they did get a lot of positive input from that, which was really kind of affirming about the work that we do. Number two, we needed to identify opportunities for improvement. So one thing that they recommended was expanding our multi-tiered system of support to grade seven through 12, which we have known that that's something that we've needed to do and in working with Teaching and Learning and Jana Wolf and her team. That is a, a big piece of our ONE plan for Ohio Improvement Plan that we'll be looking at moving forward is expanding that multi-tiered system of supports. It calls for improved collaboration and transparency in budget development and monitoring, which we have been working with the treasurer's office on, and then encourages building teacher capacity for co-plan, co-serv instructional models. So we do have co-plan, co-serv as part of our strategic plan, MTSS as well. And so those are all part of the plans that we have been working towards. It is a challenge, I will say, to get these things in place with fewer resources. So that's kind of what we're struggling with right now is we know that these are the things that need to happen, and we know that they're in the best interest of our students. And just exactly how do we do that when we have fewer staff members who have ultimately less capacity because they're taking on more roles? So that's what we're kind of working through now. The report does identify potential cost savings. They examined the major cost drivers. Out-of-district placements and related service contracts are really the two biggest. So, which sometimes we talk about those as purchased services. In special education, it's really mostly our Hamilton County folks that we bring in for speech supports, occupational therapy supports, physical therapy supports. And then those out-of-district placements for students who we do not necessarily have a program that suits their needs within our district, within our neighborhood schools. It highlights the opportunity to develop more formal, data-driven, cost-efficiency strategies, and then outlines multiple potential cost-saving measures across staffing. So one of the recommendations, for example, was to just continuously review our staffing in our caseloads, which we have actually been doing. We really started that this past year. So as folks left, we would look very closely at whether we actually needed to replace that position or whether their caseload could be absorbed by other intervention specialists in that building. So we have been looking at that, and we will continue to look at that. The caseloads are highly governed by state law. So we just have to make sure that we are still within the requirements of the law, but also maximizing the staff that we have. The FRP, the second part of the FRP requirement was that the report should include immediate, short-term, and long-term recommendations to reduce excess expenditures while maintaining adequate special education programs and complying with maintenance of effort requirements. So it does, the report provides immediate recommendations, which are listed there. It provides short-term recommendations and then long-term recommendations, which are all very well-aligned with our strategic plan and our ONE plan that we have submitted to the state. The report outlines strategies that reduce spending, such as internalizing services and adjusting staffing, and then stresses that any reductions must meet allowable MOE exceptions and continue to provide adequate services. So that's where we had talked about for maintenance of effort, we can't just slash special ed spending and say, you know, spend less than we did the previous year. There are very specific requirements such as students aging out, which we have had a few students age out, and we have included that in the FRP workbook, staff retiring, those sorts of things. So those can be used to decrease the MOE, but we just have to be careful to make sure that we meet that requirement and utilize the exceptions appropriately. And then last, but not least, the recommendations to be implemented in the 25, 26 school year. So we have a district timeline there of recommended implementation. For the cost savings recommendations, we need to really get together and review those a little bit further before we determine exactly how they will be implemented. The other recommendations having to do with MTSS and co-plan, co-serv, and those things that I discussed will start being implemented immediately, as I said, because they are part of the strategic plan already. The other thing that the commission wanted us to look at was to work with ODU, the office, or the department, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, sorry, and the Office of Exceptional Children to determine how we were doing with our identification of students for special education. So every year, we do receive a special education profile from the state. And for 24, 25, we did have actionable findings in two specific areas. The first one was that we are over-identifying or disproportionately identifying students for, under the category of intellectual disabilities. So that is an area where we needed to do a root cause analysis and create a corrective action plan. And then we also have some disproportionality in our out-of-school suspensions, which again, we had to do a root cause analysis and a corrective action plan. So we worked very closely with the state and the state support team to complete a records review, which all of our records were found to be compliant. So that was a big win. To complete hours of training. So we had multidisciplinary teams that we created who went through a lot of different training on disproportionality and disproportionate representation. We completed that root cause analysis for each of those indicators, sent it to ODU. Both of them were approved. And then we did the improvement plans, which also were both approved by ODU. Systemic corrections for both improvement plans will be due in September, and we're working on those currently. We also, in FY '24, participated in a special education fiscal onsite review with two folks from ODU, Jeff Tesno and Matthew Loesch. And we were found to be compliant in all of those areas listed. There was only one instance of non-compliance, which was for procurement methods. And we rectified that and completed a corrective action plan, which then resolved that non-compliance. The pages that follow in Appendix A is just an implementation timeline, which is a beautiful implementation timeline that Leslie Chouashi actually completed in Excel for us. And then behind that, as I said, the Schoolworks Special Education Financial Review follows that. If you want to read that in full, it's there for you. Does anyone have any questions about the special education audit? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. So that is the last section of the FRP recovery plan or financial recovery plan. So that is the last section of the FRP Recovery Plan or Financial Recovery Plan.
Okay. So we are, we are on page six of the agenda now.
On forty-one.
Yeah, six of forty-one. That, we are at item E, Presentation and Approval of the Financial Recovery Plan, and we need to vote on that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. That was Ms. Anderson, Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Have them start over and clarify everything. Okay. Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. And then we're still in the Report of the Treasurer, so...
So the next few pages show the contracts that are being provided, and one of the key things is for us to look at whether or not there is ORC that's related. Is the purchase required to meet a statutory requirement in sight? So pages seven through...
Thirteen.
Thirteen are just those particular elements. And so if you have any questions about those, most of these are the established contracts. And in the far-left column, if you look at the requisition number, that will actually tell you the area that it falls into. So for example, if you see sped, that's obviously special education, B U S is going to be business arena, and so that kind of gives you an idea of where those particular elements would fall.
Okay. Do I, and this is item F with our new lettering on here, to approve contracts? Do I have a motion to approve those contracts?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Similar as to what we just went through, these represent purchase orders in excess of $5,000 in compliance with the fiscal emergency establishment from the Commission. And so this outlines whether they are a cost or whether they are neutral, and it also provides a detail relative to the ORC. And so again, the requisition number will tell you what areas they are. These are Medicare, they're the standard contracts or purchase orders we've put together at the beginning of the year for our activities, for utilities, and Medicare. Those are some of the big ones.
Okay. So for those of you following along, this is on page thirteen. It begins item G. The actual vote is on page twenty-one, and the contracts, or the purchase orders, I'm sorry, appear following page thirteen. Do I have a motion to approve those purchase orders?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
There is one then and now that is for East Cleveland City Schools. The invoice came in before the purchase order was put into place. It was for a student who is in juvenile detention. That happens because of just the way timing works through, especially if it's out of area. Those types of things are going to pop up, so, but we're required to put that in, and so there it is.
Okay. That is item H, beginning on page twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
That concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Soul, and Dr. Wilson, and everyone who helped put all this together. I know it's an immense amount of work to do all of this. All right, turning it over to Dr. Hawkins for the Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you. Item A under informational items. I just want to note that we are still trying to fill some positions that, you know, it is July, but we had some late resignations, and so we are still moving to fill those positions in our building, and so everyone is working very hard at that. You know, many interviews are being had. We are excited, you know, many of the buildings, we have had great reports for some of our new hires, and so we are excited about what's coming up in the next school year. Section B is to approve our substitute rates, and they are listed below. These are in the mid-range for schools around our areas. It is very difficult to get substitutes at Mount Healthy, so, you know, we need to at least be competitive to get substitutes, but those are listed below.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept these rates?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion?
Yes. Have any of these increased from last?
They are an increase, all.
Okay.
None of them?
No.
Are they?
I thought the one for, I thought the others.
Okay. I'm wrong. They're the same.
Just wondering. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Item C is to approve resignations and terminations. These are all listed, as I mentioned, people that were moving to different districts or retiring.
Do I have a motion to accept these resignations?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Can we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is to approve the reinstatement. This person was on the RIF list and a position opened up in the department where they had been cut from, so by law, they have the first option to be recalled.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is to approve the following personnel to fill the positions from where people have resigned or retired. Those people are listed on those pages.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sorry. Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion?
For line item one, do we just not know what that is yet since it's not factored in? Or did that just get missed?
Hold on. Let me flip back.
Line one, I'm sorry, line item one, under cost included in FRP budget, yield savings, cost neutral, additional cost, that column. Where it says this will need to include benefit.
The first person?
Yeah. Do we just not know?
We don't know.
Okay.
Yet. They were in the process.
Okay.
So we have to find that one.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is to approve classified personnel that are listed below.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we take a vote?
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is to approve contract changes and transfers of the people listed below.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Have a stand.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is to approve the following supplemental positions that are listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is to approve the handbooks for our buildings, and those attachments are on this but were sent previously.
Mm-hmm. Do I have a motion to approve the handbooks?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is to approve in lieu of transportation for... These were additional names that were not approved yet, and there was an attachment with those names.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is the first reading of recommended by-law policy changes, and some of these are related to the fiscal policies that Mr. Soul mentioned earlier, and those were previously pulled to give the Treasurer's Office time to review them, and the ones that are doing the first reading are listed below.
Okay.
Item L is the approval of technical changes to the following policies, and the recommended action is to approve these changes. The compliance officers will be Shayna Berg and Jason Sparks. A lot of these are dealing with discrimination, Title IX issues.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? And could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M is to adopt a resolution to proceed. I'm going to read this. This is in relation to the levy. This is resolution submitting the question of an additional tax levy for the purpose of current expenses to the electors of the Mount Healthy City School District pursuant to Section 5705.21 of the revised code. Whereas on June 12, 2025, the Board of Education of Mount Healthy City School District, the Board of Education, adopted a resolution pursuant to RC 5705.03 declaring it necessary to levy an additional three-mill tax levy for a continuing period of time for the purpose of current expenses. And whereas pursuant to Section 5705.03 of the Ohio Revised Code, this Board of Education certified to the Hamilton County Auditor a copy of aforementioned resolution requesting the county auditor to certify to this Board of Education the total current tax valuation of this school district and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by three mills per year as specified in such resolution. And this Board of Education has received the certification of the county auditor that such total current tax valuation of the school district is $532,471,700, and that such dollar amount of revenue that will be procured by the stated millage is $1,597,415 per year during the life of the levy, assuming that the total current tax valuation remains the same throughout the life of the levy. A copy of such certification is attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District with not less than two-thirds of its members concurring. Section I, that it is hereby found, determined, and declared that the amount of taxes which may be raised by this school district within the ten-mill limitation by levies on the current tax duplicate will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of this school district. Section II, that pursuant to the provisions of Section 5705.21 of the Ohio Revised Code, it is necessary to levy an additional tax in excess of such ten-mill limitation for the purpose of current expenses of the school district at a rate not exceeding three mills for each $1 of taxable value, which amounts to $105 for each $100,000 of county auditor's appraised value for a continuing period of time. Section III, that the question of the adoption of said tax levy shall be submitted to all the electors of the entire territory of the school district at the election to be held on November 4, 2025. And if said levy is approved by a majority of said electors, such additional tax shall be first placed upon the 2025 tax list and duplicate for first collection in calendar year 2026. Section IV, in accordance with RC 5705.21(c) and RC 5705.25, the Board of Education submits that the form of the ballot to be used at said election by the Hamilton County Board of Elections is substantially as followed. Proposed tax levy, Mount Healthy City School District. A majority affirmative vote is necessary for passage. An additional tax for the benefit of the Board of Education of Mount Healthy City School District, County Hamilton, Ohio, for the purpose of current expenses that the county auditor estimates will collect $1,597,415 annually at the rate not to exceed three mills for each $1 of taxable value, which amounts to $105 for each $100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value, for a continuing period of time commencing in 2025, first due in calendar year 2026. And then there's a place to mark for the levy or against the levy. And then there's a place to mark for the levy or against the levy. Section V, that the board, that the school district only has territory in Hamilton County, Ohio, and the treasurer of this Board of Education be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Hamilton County Board of Elections with a copy of the previous resolution of necessity adopted by this Board of Education, and that the aforementioned county auditor certification not later than four o'clock on the 90th day before the date of the said election, and to notify the Board of Elections to the cause to cause notice of the election on the question of levying said tax to be given as required by law. Section VI, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Section VII, it is found and determined that all formal action of this Board of Education concerning or related to the adoption of this resolution was adopted in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board that resulted in such formal action were adopted in meetings open to the public in compliance with all applicable requirements of the Ohio Revised Code.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. We have an executive session on here. Do we need that, or was that just a placeholder executive session?
It was in case you needed it.
Okay. I think we're good without it, so we are going to skip the executive session. Do we need to vote on removing that from the agenda? Okay.
The commission never votes on it when they skip it, I don't think.
That's true.
They never skip it.
We could just vote no.
I make a motion to skip the executive session.
Well, we're actually, we're making a motion to have the executive session, and then we're all going to vote no on it.
Oh, well, I make a motion. Make a motion.
I don't know how we're supposed to do this. Okay.
We've skipped them before, and they haven't.
Yeah, okay, we're not going to worry about it then. Never mind. Um, all right, so we're skipping all of the executive session stuff, Board of Education report, and our open discussion, and all that stuff. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this is the last meeting that Dr. Hawkins will be representing as superintendent for anyone watching who doesn't know. She has resigned as superintendent effective December 31st. But, because we can't do anything in a simple and straightforward way, Dr. Sarah Wilson will be taking over as superintendent. Starting August 1st, Dr. Hawkins' title is changing to special consultant to the superintendent. So she will continue to do a lot of very important work for the district until the end of the year, but next month, we will begin with Dr. Wilson as the superintendent of our meetings, and the superintendent in the office there, and the superintendent who answers the superintendent's phone number, and all of that stuff. So I hope that Dr. Hawkins will reappear at the December meeting, so we can say a proper goodbye.
I see.
A bye or a quilt? So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that all of that was happening. We will give a temporary thank you and goodbye, but you have to come back in December for an official one.
All right.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Don't have to wait long on this.
I already had to decide.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
What is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
August 11.
I skipped that.
The next commission meeting is the 31st.
Yes. And I will not be at the August meeting, and...
Right. Dr. Turner won't be here, and it will be Sarah and I, and we are not used to running the meeting, so I think you should at least be in the audience for assistance.
Lavanda knows how to do virtually everything.
That's true. We do still have Lavanda. Not that you are not capable, Dr. Wilson?
Yes. We'll say 8:21 is the time of adjournment.